Okay, now we are live. We can begin.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Kent Planning Board, January 2021. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. I think we're getting worse.
I thought we did pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
It's a new year, we're not supposed to bark so hard.
All right, has everybody read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yep.
Yep.
There.
Anyone have questions or comments about them?
Nope.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
And I vote aye too.
Hello, everybody. It's John Carlo. I'm just having some technical difficulties.
Hey.
Can you hear me? Oh, welcome aboard.
How do you vote? I'm assuming this is for the minutes.
Right.
I, uh, vote aye.
Okay, thank you.
And Phil, has everybody voted on the minutes?
Yes.
Just for the record, can you make sure everybody goes around and says they're alone in the room? Each planning board member?
You're very right. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I forgot.
And also, Phil-
I'll call your name. Just say your name. And that you're alone in the room and you have no messages from Vladimir Putin. Simon?
Simon Carey, board member. I'm alone.
And Dennis? We can't hear you too well, Dennis, or at least I can't.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I couldn't hear you. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm alone. I'm in the room.
Charlie?
My name is Charles Sisto. I'm alone in the room.
Steven?
Steven Williams, alone.
Ian Carlo?
Uh, John Carlo Gattucci, and I am alone.
And Phil Polmak, and I am alone too. And shall we continue? Is there anyone here representing the Sun property who would like to speak? We can't hear you, sir.
Tony?
Phil can't hear you. Can't hear him.
Not yet, Tony.
Tony, you might have to try setting your system preferences to enable your microphone.
Tony muted in here. I think you've got to unmute.
It's like you're muted now?
All right, you could try and unmute, or if you click on the bottom where it says mute, there's a little up arrow and you could select a different microphone, sir.
Who has got a TV going in the background?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, Anthony.
Speak up, please.
Thank you for the help.
Please state your name and why you're here.
Okay, my name's Tony Casari, and I'm the engineer for Westchester Modular Homes. And I am here with the Sun project. And I got the memorandum yesterday and had a chance to review it. I, um, there's a bunch of things I have to cover. Um, I just wanted to know if there was anything other than what was on here that either Julie or Bruce wanted to add to what they said so that I would know what else I have to address. Um, let me try one thing. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get brave now and try to share my screen, so bear with me if I disappear into the ether, so hold on a sec. See what happens here. Okay, can everybody see this?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, all right. This is what I sent, um, sent in in the last submission. There might be a couple extra notes added because there was a couple things on here that were quite simple, and I started to add them in. I just wanted to give, there was a question about, I think, you know, what are you trying to tell us here kind of thing? So, let me go, this would be the proposed plan, and I just wanna zoom in something like this so you can see it. Um, obviously, down in the lower part is where we were proposing the house and the well and the septic. This other lot that Mr. Sun purchased and is gonna be annexed to Lot 20, uh, there was a question about, you know, can you do any, move the house and the well and the septic to that lot? So, what, what we did, there was a couple things we did. First, uh, we did some deep holes that seemed to be fairly reasonable. There are six squares here. Um, I think, I, I assume everybody got a copy of the plan so that they kind of know what I'm talking about, but if not, just holler and I'll try to explain. Uh, there were six holes here that we did on-site, deep holes. And somewhere down here, there's a note that says, average roughly, there was between 18 inches and two feet of topsoil, from two to six feet. It was a moist, moderately compacted with boulders, two-size boulders. And at six feet, we pretty much hit rock or water, okay? Uh, so then the other thing that we did was we went to try to locate in the field wells, the existing wells. So, to the lot immediately north of our piece, uh, let's see, north of Lot 20, I'm gonna assume that that one is 20, the lot immediately above us is probably 21, the lot immediately above that is 22, and then our other lot to the west is 23. So I'm assuming that's how they numbered these things. Um, the existing well on Lot 21, you can see here, is just above the north arrow. And that's the one, to me, that's relatively critical because it's lower than where I would, the only place I could really put a septic on this other lot. So, um, I have to be 200 feet away. So that's what that 200-foot arc was all about. Now, at the, I'm sorry I keep bouncing in and out on you, but, um, at the bottom, we found the well across the street. And this obviously is lower than everything, so there's a 200-foot arc there. So, between that well on 21, also here's the well on 22, which is, could be slightly higher, could be slightly lower. But the main thing is that when you do the 200-foot arc around the well on 21 and the well across the street, you're kind of left with this little pinched area. Uh, and I don't know if you can see my mouse moving around, but you're in between these arcs here. There's not a whole lot of area left to put a septic. So, then what I did was I moved the house, I moved the garage. Uh, I assumed that for argument's sake, the perforate would be about the same as what they found on Lot 20. And so I would need the same number of fields, and that's what all of these parallel lines are. So the way I started this, not knowing where the wells were at that point, was I put the, I had to put our, the well for that lot in here someplace. So I, I stuck it up at the top, came down 100 feet, because as, as long as you're above, you only have to be 100 feet from the septic. Uh, then I, then I drew in the septic, and then roughly 20 feet off of that, I would have the garage and the house. And so that's how it all kind of fit together. So that's what this plan was attempting to show. Um, because I know there was a bunch of comments, like on Julie's thing, you know, you drew all of this nonsense, but you didn't tell us what it all meant. So what I will try to do is put together a written report that says, um, you know, what all these arcs and, and test holes and all that sort of stuff. And so basically, uh, that's, uh, as far as I got, as, as far as trying to show something on the other lot. Um, and then the rest of the comments on here, I'll just have to address them. Some of them were, you know, relatively simple, um, and, you know, I actually took care of them. I started working on them today a little bit. Um, there also is a lot of, um, there's a lot of comment here having to do with scheduling and all that sort of thing. And what I want to try to point out is, this isn't a multi-lot subdivision, so it's one house. So typically what I do, and I usually show it on my existing conditions, so I'm gonna switch. This is the existing conditions map. What I do on this, on this plan is I put what I call a construction sequence. And the first line is always install all the erosion control stuff, um, silt fencing, uh, the, um, stabilized construction entrance, all that kind of stuff. And then we get either the town engineer or representative of the town of some sort to come out and inspect it, and they give us a thumbs up, okay, you can start. So in other words, there's no work, no digging that takes place, uh, until we get a sign-off on all the erosion control that's put in. And then, as, as the project goes along, I have another line in here that says, at the end of the day, you have to inspect, let's, let's say I was working over in this area. I'll have to inspect all of this silt fence and make sure that something didn't slide down, knock the fence over, or something, you know, in other words, at the end of the day, all the fencing has to be re-inspected and make sure that it's, or changed or fixed, or whatever you gotta do to make sure that it's protecting the area. And then, in the construction sequence, I just go through all the things that have to be done. And the last line is always, when the site is completely stabilized, um, we remove all the erosion control that's left once we get a sign-off from the town, and I always use the town engineer because I used to be one and liked to feel that I was important. Um, um, so, uh, you, you, uh, after the town engineer or whomever would come out and say, okay, it's sufficiently stabilized or everything is stabilized, you can take out whatever silt fence is left. And that's always the last thing. The first thing is putting it up, and the last thing is taking it down. And as the project goes along, it's always being inspected, it's always being checked uh, after rains, or if you're working in an area relatively close to the silt fence, sometimes you're moving dirt around and a, and a rock will roll down and, and, you know, it's only, it's on your ass. You've knocked that stuff over like nothing, so you have to fix it and reset it. And so, um, that was the only thing I did want to point out, that a lot, that's the way I typically handle it. Um, and I think that's about, that's it. Um, as, as far as we, you know, we looked at the possibility of putting a house and a well and a septic all on the other lot, it looks good, but the problem is from exist, the list, existing lots in the, uh, lots, the existing wells in the area, we squash it down to like there's no room left for a septic. So that's why I didn't go into a big, long discussion about, uh, you know, the deep holes as far as, you know, could you, if the wells weren't there, could you, would, would you be able to put a septic yet? You probably have to bring in some fill like you do on the original lot, which, uh, my feeling is that it's all the same through here, where, you know, down around six feet or so, or between five and six feet, you, you're hitting rock or water or something, so you're either gonna have to put fill or curtain drains or a combination of the two. So, uh, it would be the same type of thing, but with these wells, where they're located, uh, it really chops it down so there's hardly any area left where I can put a septic on that lot. Uh, so, that's, you know, that's what I, uh, wanted to point out. You know, I'm gonna try to stop, if you'd like, I'll leave the share up there or I'll stop. Hopefully I won't lose you again, but, um, I could stop here. Hey, there we go. Okay, so that's, that's my, uh, my points that I wanted to make. Uh, I've got a, a good pen and plenty of paper here, so if you want me to look at some stuff or take some more notes or whatever, I'm prepared. I've got-
You understand.
Uh, should I go ahead?
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Nope. No, we just, let's hear what the consultants have to say.
I'm sorry?
What the consultants have to say.
Right, okay, good. Julie, do you want to start off?
Yep, I'll start. Uh, good evening, Julie Mangorillo from Roddy Sorkin Andrews, I'm the Planning Boards Consulting Engineer. So, yes, you need to provide the justification in writing, you know, in a written narrative that, you know, anybody can understand why Lot 2 wouldn't be suitable. You know, a neighbor or anybody else who wants to know why, it has to be easily understood with the technical justification. Uh, that's, that's really gonna be the, the key point to this, because, I mean, the, the deeps are manageable and they're on a flat slope, so, you know, just looking at that, it seems like Lot 2 is the place to be.
Uh, except for the existing wells, that's the problem.
So that, that needs to be, you know, clearly explained.
And you do it because you have to make modifications on the original lot to make it work as well, and you still have to make modifications on the other lot, so it's similar.
Does a, does a house sort of view actually count? I'm sure there's a difference here, a view of the lake.
I believe the reason Mr. Sun, and I don't see his name here, so I don't think he's on, um, he picked the location of where it is on Lot 20, or the present location, because it has the best view from there. That's what I was told. I wasn't involved in that. I think that's what he told, uh, the Westchester guys like Vinnie and, and, um, Joe Farazza, the, the salesman, I, I think he told them that that was his favorite spot on that lot because of the view.
And if, if that's, you know, true and can be substantiated, then that can also add some weight to, uh, the justification.
Okay.
And then, one of the other items I was a bit confused about is, you know, you guys went out and did some deep tests for the, the septic, um, Lot 23, but I didn't see any deep tests in the areas of the infiltrators.
Yeah, what happened was, we got caught by that big snowstorm. When we just got those six holes done, I think it was starting to snow when they did the sixth hole. And they just never got a chance to get back out there, because, I agree with you. Because I would like to have had exactly on the spot. Now, one of the, the infiltrator that I showed, uh, where I was gonna try to cut the water off coming down the driveway, I think what I've got is probably close enough. You know, I'll look at those two, there's two holes that are pretty close, and I'll see exactly what those two holes were, because there was one, one hole that went down, I think, almost seven feet. And it was, it was pretty good. I think he hit water at seven or seven and a half feet. So if, you know, that, we might be able to work with that. Let me see what those are. If they're not satisfactory to my liking, then what I'll do is I'll make sure he puts one right where I have those shown, and then obviously where I have the other ones shown. I picked the spot where the other ones are shown because it was a spot that was less than 15%. I didn't want to aggravate the situation, so there was a, a hole there where it would fit. And so, I mean, you know, we'll take a look at that and I'll, I'll put that also, I'll write it up somehow so that you can see it.
Okay, yeah, that would be terrific. Uh, your, your questions about the, the construction schedule, you know, I did review the construction schedule on the front of the page. What the code is looking for is for you to just add number of days, number of weeks for each of those steps. You know, installing silt fence and stabilized construction entrances, three days. You know, you can just put it in parentheses next to it, you know?
I'll try to use my best judgment, because-
Yeah, it doesn't-
I, I always give them a year, you know?
Yeah, nobody's gonna hold you to anything, but just to get a sense for, you know, installing the septic, how many weeks? Uh, you're not doing a foundation, or you're not excavating for a foundation, I don't believe.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's all more, it's a hillside. We're just cutting out part of the hillside. It's not that bad.
Just, uh, for each of those, you know, light items, just however many days or however many weeks you have, it's, it just needs to be a estimate.
Yeah, I can, I can talk to the guys.
Yeah.
I'll talk to the guys in the, that are actually gonna be doing this stuff, and they say, well, typically it takes, you know, three days, four days to dig the foundation, well, this one will be faster, but typically it might be two or three days to dig a foundation, and then you have to do the footings, then you gotta, you know, you gotta call for inspections. And that sometimes might take a week for the guy to get out there if they're, you know, like overloaded or something like that, so.
Right, no, nobody's gonna hold, hold you to it.
Put some sort of, uh, a list of days or weeks or whatever, okay?
Just, just your best estimate.
Okay.
Um, we also have some concerns about the, the existing driver driveway or access easement, and then how the new little piece of driveway would tie into that. So you're gonna need to provide, uh, dr, uh, yeah, driveway profiles showing that, and if any improvements need to be made where the existing driveway access ties into, uh, Westwood Drive. Just to make sure that all the water stays.
That's been there for years, I mean, as far as I know, I don't think there's a problem, but-
Right, but it's, you know, right now, it's, I believe, like a secondary access where it's going to turn into a primary access. And so any improvements that can be made now to prevent any runoff from, you know, flowing across Westwood Drive-
Oh, definitely.
Washouts or iceing, you know, that's what- And then some additional details on the trench drain and how you're going to prevent the, uh, the gravel from getting into and clogging up the trench drain.
Okay, what I've done in the past, and I'll just tell you now, is we've done a small, we've paved a small piece of the road or driveway above it.
Yeah.
So that, you know, this way, the only thing that may come down is a little bit of silt. And then that'll go to, before it hits the cul-de-sac, it'll go into that little bubbler basin, and that's where you can clean stuff out there and the trench drain itself. But maybe I'll put 10 or 15 feet, we'll pave it. And otherwise you don't have the gravel go right up to the trench, and that trench drain, that's going in there. There's nowhere to keep that. Okay, that's good.
Um, and then, uh, we're looking for improved notes for future homeowners on how to maintain and operate all of these, you know, underground stormwater management systems. What do they need to do? Do they need to inspect it? Do they need to call a vac truck?
Right, exactly.
And what's the issue about that?
The best thing to do for them, obviously, would, uh, call somebody that knows what they're doing. I mean, you pop the lid, you could look in there and say, oh, boy, now what? You gotta get somebody to, to put a vac oil or vac hose down in there to get it out, so, yep, that's fine. Well, I'll put, you want that as a note on the plan or something?
Yeah, a plan for a future homeowner.
Okay, okay.
All right, and then there's, you know, as you saw, the additional required information from the DEC permit. And I think those, that was my major-
Okay, I'll go through this, and if I have any questions, if you don't mind, I'll call and cry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Ask you for help. Okay, great.
Bruce, do you have something to add?
Yes, thanks, Phil. Uh, good evening, Bruce Barber, Cornerstone Associates, I'm environmental consultant. Good evening, Tony, how are you?
Good, Bruce, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Um, thank you for sending a, a bunch more information on this project. I, I have two real, um, questions here for the board, and that is, and I'll just kind of read through the, the chronology here, if I can find my glasses. We go. So, Tony, thank you for providing the deeds, contracts, there was an easement document that you provided. Um, so the question I have is the, there was an ease, uh, variance, excuse me, this is in the R80 zone or two-acre zone.
Yep.
So a variance was obtained on June of 2015 for tax Lot 20, which indicated the variance was for 0.76 acres where two acres is required. So then there were several extensions that were granted. And then subsequent to that, um, a deed has been provided in the packet dated March 22, 2018, conveying Lot 20 to Mr. Sun. So all is well. Uh, but then what we have is a contract of sale for the adjoining Lot 23, but I did not see a deed for that property in the packet. Is there a deed where he has purchased Lot 23?
Uh, you know what? I thought it was in there. I just, you know, Mr. Sun, we gave him a list. I need this, I need this, I need this, and he sent it all, and I put it all in that packet. Uh, let me take a look. Uh, let's see, I'll have, I'll have to look and find it, but you're interested in a deed for the second lot, Lot 23, correct?
Correct, they'll be conveying the property, and I think we're interested, of course, in that there's potential improvements going on that property, and there's an application with that property. Want to make sure he, he owns that property, and also both lots are substandard under zoning, Tony, as you know. And if they are indeed owned by the same person, um, they would of necessity be, be merged into one single lot. However, when the variance was applied for, for an extension this year, now granted, it is a contract of sale for the second lot in 2019, right? The variance for the extension did not add or include that purchased lot. It was still an extension for 0.76 acres where two acres is required. So I just think we gotta kind of get that straightened out in terms of a providing documentation that Mr. Sun owns Lot 23 through a deed that's been recorded. And number two, um, is that they're both under the same ownership, whereas then both lots would be merged as one. And, uh, you have those two merged lots on the bulk zoning table as, you know, just like one and three-quarters acres. So, so you have effectively merged them, which is fine. I think just the board needs to see the documentation that they are indeed, um, owned by the same person and will be merged. Okay?
I think Julie even asked for a note to be added to the plan, which I, that's one of the things, I already put it on there. Before the CEO was granted that the lots would be merged.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I'll have to get you a copy of the deed for Lot 23, okay?
Okay, and then the, this, the second thing, Tony, is that I was looking at your, um, the arcs of all these wells and what have you that you had just put on split screen. And am I looking at it correctly that on the proposed septic system on Lot 20, where the house has been all along, not on what we're considering the other lot, does, do the arcs, the 200-foot arcs also go through that septic system on Lot 20?
It does, but that, that, just because I drew a giant circle, um, that septic system is lower-
Giant circle, you drew the 200-foot arc.
Right, uh, that, that septic system, the proposed septic system on Lot 20 is lower than the well in elevation, so that you really only have to be 100 feet. Typically, if your, if your septic system is below your well, you only need a spread of 100. If you're, if it's reversed, if your septic system is above the well, you need a separation of 200 feet.
Okay, all right, got it. So the one across the street, would that have a 200-foot arc or a 100-foot arc based upon?
That's kind of, that would have a 200, you know what? Let me see if I can do this again without- That's kind of, that would have a two hun- you know what, let me see if I can do this again without losing you guys, hold on.
Okeydoke, thanks.
Let's see, there we go, boy, I'm getting good at this, okay. Um, this arc here.
Tony.
Yeah. This arc here.
Tony, when you're.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Tony, when your surveyor located those wells in the field, did he, did he shoot the surface elevation at those wells?
I, no, I, I don't, I don't have that information, but that's a good question, let me ask. Uh, I will find out.
Probably what would be a big help is if where it shows existing well, if you annotated the, uh, ground elevation at that well, uh, then we'd have a better handle on, on two hundred feet or one hundred feet, uphill or downhill.
Exactly, this, this well, the well on, let's call it twenty-one, the one that's immediately north of us, just looking at the way the topo goes, would be lower than where I was putting the septic, that I know for sure. The other one might be a little iffy, the, on the next lot up, which I'm, I would call twenty-two, I guess. Um, uh, Bruce, to add to your question, this, the well on the lot across the street would have a two hundred foot arc because it's a lot lower than virtually anything on our lot twenty-three.
Okay, so Tony, could you, could you, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, if you can't, that's okay. How, from that lowest well across the street, how far is it to what is currently proposed on lot twenty septic versus what potentially could happen on lot twenty-three, distance wise?
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something here, hold on. All right, this is, this is everything on what is, uh, we're getting a little crowded here, here's the well, now you wanted to know from this well to this septic.
Right, to the closest point, closest point of that septic, right.
Okay, hold on, I'll tell you, you know, right to the junction box, it's, uh, three hundred and fifty-two feet, give or take.
Okay. And how about the, okay.
Now, what you, now, this is the two hundred foot arc, let me, sometimes I can, I don't know if you can see what turned blue.
Mm-hmm, got it.
The two hundred foot arc from the well across the street.
And what about to the potential septic system on lot twenty-three, Tony, what's the distance for that?
For this one here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's probably gonna be, let's see, hold on a minute. If I pick, say from here.
Mm-huh.
Down to here. Two hundred and ninety-one feet, give or take, you know, two hundred and ninety feet, three hundred feet, give or take.
Okay, great, and I have one more for you to do, so as you're getting really good at this, is the one just above the north arrow.
This guy?
Yeah, closest to the septic, right.
To this, to the septic on twenty-three, uh, uh, whatever this one is, twenty?
On, on both, on lot twenty and then lot twenty-three.
Okay. All right, let's go over here first, from here to here.
One thirty.
About one, one twenty-eight, one thirty, give or take.
Okay.
And then the other one, whoops, certain things you can't do with this thing. Here to, let's see, they put the first field right here. A hundred and forty-five.
Excellent, so then, Tony, is it reasonable to say that the wells are more closely located to the potential septic on lot twenty-three when compared to what is on lot twenty?
Uh, yes, you mean closer to this than this?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, they are.
Okay, I think that's, Tony, I wasn't sure at all, and I think that's a very important element for the planning board to consider in terms of looking at the environmental impacts, that the wells are further apart from the existing septic than the one which would be on lot twenty-three. The, the thing that's difficult with lot twenty-three, if the board looks at that, the house and the septic, as is shown, that's the, the far left component, is really almost entirely in an area outside of steep slopes. Right? Whereas the property on lot twenty is almost entirely within steep slopes. So there's a balancing act here that needs to be done in terms of assessing the environmental impacts, but the fact that the wells are further away on lot twenty is an important point to make, Tony.
Okay.
And I guess the other thing I just would like you to think about is with the two lots merged, in other words, twenty-three and twenty becoming one, do you have any running room to reduce maybe some of the steep slope impacts by having an expansion area on one section versus a primary area on another? Can the house be changed around a little bit and still keep the desired views? Because you basically have, you know, both lots to work with, with one house and a septic only needed, so just a suggestion.
Okay, the only thing that I know that, and I know you will, I know you know this, but I feel like I have to point it out. They already got DEC and Health Department approval on this, on the, on the setup on lot twenty-twenty. I gotta remember these numbers, this has all been approved by DEC and by, now, if we start moving things around, he's got to go through all of that approval process again. Again, and I'm just, I'm just pointing it out, that's all.
Right, now, Tony, in the packet that was sent, it was indicated that the Health Department's septic was approved, but I did not see the water well approval for it, and also, does it, was the Health Department given plans with the lot twenty-three or just the lot twenty, in other words, were the plans to the Health Department and DEC considering both lots?
Uh, I don't believe so, um, I, don't hold me to it, but I was under the impression that at the time he went for, for the approval for twenty-three, uh, twenty, sorry. He did, I don't believe he owned twenty at the time. I don't, I, but that, don't hold me to it, I'm not sure.
Gotcha.
Um, I don't know if Vinnie is on the line, if, uh, if he can hear us.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, Vinnie, do you happen to know if, when he got the approval for lot twenty, did he off, did he own twenty-three yet?
So, just a little history, the, the owner, the current owner, uh, Roger's son, he bought the property, um, that he wants to build on, I'm calling that, you know, lot A, the one that's got a, brought out of approval, um, after it was brought out approved, and then he bought the property next door, not, not understanding, you know, the implications that two substandard lots would be merged. He had no intention on building on that lot, obviously, it was, uh, just for extra privacy, if you will, or just a little extra, uh, property for himself. Um, and he bought it for, I'm gonna say a song, okay, because the previous owner, uh, that sold it to him, went through the exercise and I actually, that's why we, we were doing some research to say, okay, well, why did the, why did the person sell it for next to nothing compared to what a marketable lot is in that area? And then, you know, when I talked to the, uh, engineer that got the Health Department approval on, uh, the, the primary property, he, he ended up just mentioning the, what we're talking about, the wells, and he's like, yeah, there was no way you were gonna be able to put a septic on there for that reason alone. And then that's obviously where, um, we did a little more digging and find out exactly where the wells were and came up with the same, you know, uh, the same outcome.
So, oh, thanks, Vinnie, appreciate it. Um, so the house, look, the house footprint, could you just bring your cursor over the house footprint, please, Tony?
With this one?
The, yes.
Okay, that's this one, I put the same exact footprint and everything here, just, that's a little clearer, but this is it here.
No, I'm just thinking, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was gonna say, that's the house, this is a proposed future garage. And I show it being graded out, so, and then the driveway is here, that thing that just lit up, that's.
Got you.
Talk about dead flat, I mean.
Right.
It's your tabletop coming straight in, so.
Right. Tony, I, I don't want to, um, you know, um, suggest to your client um, to start changing all sorts of stuff, but just thinking out loud here, the septic is of course very challenging to get approvals from, but I'm wondering if you might and your client might just consider, all things being the same, if the house and the garage went to lot twenty-three where it's nice and flat, would that help reduce the amount of disturbance on the site and not create a hardship for Mr. Sun?
Um, I don't know, I have to think about that because now what ends up happening is I've got to run, I've got to run the sewer line from twenty-three over twenty to get to the approved area, that can't go with me. This, basically, I was, while, while you were thinking and talking before, I was trying to figure, you were talking about maybe swapping areas and moving things around, I can't get a septic to work on lot twenty-three.
Right.
Because of the, the existing wells on other properties. So the only thing that could be moved is the house, but doing that, you know, now I gotta, I gotta sleeve it, I've got this long run, you know, I probably have to pump it. I have a long run to get all the way accro- you know, all this distance all the way across. Um, and, you know, I don't know how that would affect.
I, I do know, Tony, it's Vinnie, I do know that the homeowner is, is, you know, is not interested in moving the location of the house primarily because of, uh, the view of the lake of where it is, so, you know, if we can avoid that at all, uh, you know, at all costs, that'd be, that would be great, and I, I know that the homeowner, he couldn't make it to the meeting tonight. Um, but he has no intention on moving the location of the house. Uh, you know, if possible, he would have rather moved the septic up there, which isn't, um, versus moving the house up there, so, um, you know, obviously he couldn't speak for himself, but I can vouch for him that he, he, he really does not want to move the location of the house. And I don't know, again, as to whether or not there's anything legality wise, whether he can even cross the, the easement, I don't know what the, you know, legal implications of that are regardless, but he, he doesn't have any interest in, um, you know, if he can avoid it, he does not have any interest at all in moving the location of the property, the house.
So what, what we've been asking for all along is to have the written justification as to why, you know, the lot twenty is more suitable. So that's, you know, that's still what we're looking for, I mean, the, the explanation of, of the drawing is nice, but that, that's the piece that the planning board needs.
Right, and I think, I think what we're saying, what Julie and I are saying is that's exactly what you guys just did in that exercise, but there's a need to provide it in narrative format so people can understand.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm writing as fast as my little fingers will go, hold on.
This is tape.
I'll, I'll try to put all of this stuff in that report where I, you know, I talk about the wells and the, the, the view and not wanting to move the house and the whole, I tried to put it, is that okay, I'll put it all in one.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
Report or letter with, you know, technical reasons, not just, oh, he doesn't want to, but approved view, there's the issue with the neighboring wells, that, you know, things that, you know, other people in the general public can understand.
Right, right, I mean, I, you know, yeah, we can, I could eliminate the septic on lot twenty-three just simply because of the existing wells that are in the area, that's easy.
Right, and certainly.
The view was just something, that's just, you know, that's something else, but, you know, it's, uh, uh, I'll put it in there, but it, it's really, you're kind of stuck.
I'm sure it's a million dollar view.
Uh, I would assume so.
There's a lot of, it's quite a few trees.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That's all I have, so, thank you.
Do you have anything to add? Liz, do you have anything to add? No. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, comments?
No. No.
We have any actions we need to take now?
No, just, uh, just as a reminder, there, there'll need to be a public hearing. So, uh, this will be my last meeting as I'll be going on maternity leave shortly. So if, uh, all of the information that we're looking for comes in uh, at the next meeting, the February meeting, the, the planning board may be in a position to consider setting the public hearing for the March meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Tony, do you have any other questions for us?
No, I, I, no, I think I, you know, I understand better, uh, about the scheduling and uh, the other stuff, so, and I know what I have to put, uh, in the report and I'll give you a written response too, Julie, sorry about that. I always put that off to the end and I think I completely forgot about it.
Please provide a written response.
Yes.
If you have any, any questions about the comments, send me an email, call my office, they'll get a message to me.
Okay.
And, and Tony, if you, if you could please, uh, find that deed.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's in my notes here, I scribbled that down.
Great.
And also I have two things for Roger to get me, I want him to get me the, uh, the well, the permit for the well. I'm used to doing things in Westchester, when you've got a septic and a well approved, it's on one form. But I know like in other counties, they do it as two separate forms, so I have to, uh, that might be my fault, I might have said to him, I need the septic approval, assuming the well came with it. So, well, I'll have to, I will have to chase him to get, to get that for us too, so I need the well and the deed from him and I'll try to take care of the rest of the comments on you.
Thanks, so.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
You too.
And you too, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Do you, do we want to discuss, um, Easton and what's this, Kenash now? Anyone?
Yeah, yes, I have a, a big, long list of inspections that, uh, I've done, Bruce has done, uh, Bill Walter and come, come to us for some of them, some of them. Uh, Easton and Kenash are the only ones that require any action from the planning board where all of the rest are just updates to the board as to what's going on, so if you're ready for me to talk about those, I am ready.
So. Is this money amounts?
Yes, there'll be money amounts.
Phil, I sent, Phil, I sent you the, the two documents today that can give you the amounts for Kenash and Easton.
I know, but I don't have the documents in front of me, that's all.
That's all right, I have them.
All right, let's go. Let's go, let's go.
Okay. Uh, Easton, uh, is for a single family home, uh, on Birch Point, either in or just outside of Gypsy Trail. Previously, there was an existing house, they took it down to build a new house. This was approved before I worked for the planning board and before Bill Walters was the building inspector. So this somehow slipped through the cracks, we went out and did an inspection, everything seems fine, seems generally in compliance with the approved plan. Typically, oh, this was also, they weren't required to get coverage under the DEC general permit because it was ten years ago. So, um, you know, typically the code says to hold the bond for two years after the date of acceptance of the stabilization, but seeing as it's probably been stabilized for, I don't know, more than five years, uh, at this time, we would recommend to the planning board to recommend to the town board to release the bond. And then, uh, any remaining review fees or escrow after, uh, any open invoices have been paid.
Questions, anyone?
All right, so the bond amount for Easton is. uh, three thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. So, three eight nine nine point three eight.
I'll, I'll try to remember that.
It's in the memo. No, I know.
Can I get a motion to ask the town board to release the bond for thirty-eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents?
There you go. Well done.
I'll make the motion.
And a second, please?
Second.
And, uh, Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Stephen? Charlie?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
And I vote aye also.
Uh, the next one is, uh, for Kenash, which is by Lake Carmel on, uh, Cottage Road. This one's a little bit more recent, uh, in there's this, this single-family home. It had extra space, you know, property next to it, that they had already started to regrade to create a level area. They had to get a permit because they disturb more than five thousand feet. They came to us and they did. So that similarly has, uh, likely been stabilized in sometime in twenty nineteen, based on conversations we've had with Bill Walters. We did an inspection, everything looks fine. One of my concerns was that they had added a small gravel parking area that wasn't on the approved plans. And where it meets the grass, there is some evidence of erosion. So when I spoke with the homeowner in November, and I spoke with them again this morning, the highway department's going to put in an asphalt curb to keep the road runoff in the road instead of flowing across this gravel parking area and then dragging the gravel into the grass. So, when I spoke to Mr. Kenash this morning, he said that the highway department has done a, a temporary berm, and then they'll do a, a curb, and they'll do a permanent one in the spring once the asphalt plant are open. So based on all of that, um, I'm pretty confident that they're done, everything's stabilized, and, uh, you know, we're also gonna recommend returning their erosion control bond at this time. And any remaining review fees, escrow, after any open invoices have been paid.
Any questions, anyone?
Is that the seventeen-hundred-dollar bond we're looking at?
Yes, that's the seventeen-hundred-dollar one.
Yep.
Is that exactly?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to ask the town board to return a seventeen-hundred-dollar bond to the Kenashes?
I'll make that motion.
And a second? Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Giancarlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Simon?
Uh.
Phil? I vote aye. Passes.
Again.
So.
Julie, anything else on the inspections?
So, there's a, a whole long list of other inspections that I had done, Bruce had done, that I issued reports on yesterday or today. So, if you want me to try and run through them quickly, or if you're happy enough to read the reports on your own.
What do you think, guys?
We're good.
Comfortable, good.
They're good. I read her reports.
Okay.
I read, I read the whole volley she sent over.
No, it's a lot.
Julie's been busy. It's awesome. Nesting.
You'll be tested on them.
All right, so that, so that was it. So, if anybody has any questions about any of them later on, feel free to give me a call, send me an email. But they've been sent to the building inspector and, um, Vera has contact information for most, if not all of the property owners, so she'll be able to get them to property owners and hopefully any open items will be dealt with.
Great, thank you, Julie. Uh, are we below the line now?
We are below the line.
Yep.
Who would like to do the heavy lifting?
Yeah, I think Bruce is gonna go first.
Oh, DeSanza, uh, I spoke with Billy Walters, and he has, uh, because of the inspection, the work done out there, uh, spoken with the judge, and it has dismissed the case. All done.
I don't, uh, Kent Development, I think we're waiting for a submittal on conditions of approval, but I've seen some back and forth uh, with Jeff Battistoni and, uh, Jamie from Insight about some draft bond documents, so there's activity. Huttonham Nursing, I saw emails from, uh, Jeff Battistoni, um, having to do with documents, the last few that we need, so that's not final yet, and as soon as everything's done, done, I will write a sign-off letter. Kent Self Storage, we need a new submittal, uh, to address conditions of approval, that's V-Brock. And somebody else has to do D E P.
Though, uh, D E P, Horse Pound Ridge, this was, uh, Timber Harvest Forest Management Project that was approved in twenty nineteen. Uh, I got a call from Dan Lawrence, the forester for D E P, saying that, based on the contractor who was awarded the contract, they don't need as big a landing area, so they're going to move the landing area, uh, closer to the public road, so they're going to have less disturbance, which I think is terrific news. So, uh, he had submitted a, a letter and then a, a drawing, so showing the change from the approved plan. So, I think I circulated it, or I sent it to Vera to circulate it, uh, just after the new year. So, unless the planning board has any concerns about it, uh, I, I was just going to treat it as a field change and let them go on their way.
Gentlemen? Do it, Julie.
Excellent. Uh, back to Liz.
Okay, so fifty-two Kent Corp., which I call Mazata because everything is called Kent, and so I try to give them different names. And Vera's been working with me on that. Um, as you know, you did a conditional approval, not much to address, but we need a submittal. Uh, G A D F, the next item, same thing. I'm looking for a revised site plan so that I can sign off. Um, well, it's also Mazata, but I didn't want to have Mazata one and Mazata two, so I called fifty-two Kent Corp., Mazata, and G A D F, G A D F. Best Kiss Discount Depot is, uh, a project on which we need a full site plan approval submittal. It could be a simple one, we just need all the materials put together and submitted. Somebody else do a Nunziata.
A Nunziata is for erosion control. They said they were going to update the survey of the whole lot, so we're still waiting on that updated survey. Uh.
Fifty-two, Route fifty-two is the same as it was, nothing new.
All right. Uh, Rodriguez, Breniri, uh, Gare, Cargane, and Cabrera. Nothing new. I know Vera has reached out to Jeff Battistoni to review a letter to have them removed from the agenda. I spoke with Jeff sometime, I think maybe before the holidays, and he was going to take a look at it. Um, so hopefully we'll be able to move forward with those, of getting them off the agenda.
What about Holmes Presbyterian?
Holmes Presbyterian, Bruce, do you wanna take that one?
Sure. Um, we were waiting for a letter from the architect, um, to explain why there was the change in the approved slope stabilization and vegetation. What had happened was he got, we got the letter today from Michael Sloan, uh, indicating that, uh, through the construction process, they had seeded the hillsides in question. Uh, they had established themselves with dense vegetation. D E P found it to be satisfactory and signed off on it. Julie and I went out and looked at it. Also found the site to be stabilized as well, and asked him to provide this letter indicating why they substituted the grasses, forbs, and species that are there now, from what had been approved on the plans, which was basically shrub material. And it was because it had become so thickly established so quickly. Um, so that was the explanation. Um, I found it in the field to be plausible and, and reasonable. Um, and so, uh, that is a field change that is being requested as well.
What has to happen to make it end or be finished?
It, it actually, uh, Liz, it's all completed, it's, it's done, uh, the planting material's completed. Um, Julie and I, as I said, went out and looked at it, and, uh, it's all stable. And, and the plans themselves, um, that were approved, indicating that the intent of the planting that was approved was for slope stabilization, and they have accomplished that.
Do we have to return bond money to them?
No, not yet. They're, they're almost at C O, they're, they're still putting together their final as-built. And they have to do some other permit closeout documentation, so they're still working through that, so bond return won't happen for a while.
Consultants, do you have anything else you need to tell us?
I'm gonna give you a quick note, um, when, um, the consultants, um, meaning Julie and Bruce and I get together and meet with applicant representatives so they can have guidance about application processes. Um, in my first year, two thousand eighteen, I used to charge for that time and other management or general type things. Then Maureen and I had a discussion, Supervisor Fleming, and I had a discussion, and um, I agreed that I wouldn't charge. Um, so I didn't for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. And so now, what I'm going to do this year is I'm gonna have a conversation with her and let her know that for those application review meetings, I may start charging a little bit. That's it, really simple.
Okay.
Very good, Liz. If you want me to come to the meeting, let me know.
Uh, I'm just gonna give her a call and see what she thinks.
All right.
Gotta get charged, you gotta get, you've gotta charge for your time.
Right.
Without a doubt.
Vera, do you have anything to tell us, or ask us, or complain about?
No, you don't have time, but we, I wanna wish Julie well.
Yeah.
And we're gonna miss you.
Yes, good luck to you, Julie, and enjoy it.
Right. Good luck to you, Julie.
Yeah.
Good luck, Julie.
Yeah. Blink of an eye, I'm sure.
Gentlemen, do you have any other questions for the consultants?
No.
Hugo, it's good to see you. Do you have any questions for any of us?
I gotta, I hope everybody had a good new year.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Charlie. And a second?
I'll second it.
All right, uh, we'll start with Dennis, how do you vote? I can't hear you, Dennis, but we'll assume you say yes. Simon?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Uh, and I vote aye too. Everybody have a, a great night and a good month. And Julie, good luck to you.
Yeah, Julie, good luck.
Good luck.
You have been voting?
Stephen, no, not yet.
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
All right, everybody stay healthy and safe.
You're back.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, gang.
Thank you.